February 13th, 2018, regular board meeting. I'm Kate Borninski and I would like to wish everyone happy Punske Day and also tomorrow, Happy Valentine's Day. And I would like our, my fellow board members to introduce themselves, starting on my right.
Hi Patricia Mullen, welcome.
Good evening, Anupam Chuksedu, welcome.
Good evening, Patrick Keough, thanks for coming out in this cold evening.
Good evening, everyone, Kim Crouch. Patty McQuaid, thanks for being here.
Good evening, everybody, Doug Brooks, thanks for coming out.
Ms. Merritt, would you like to introduce your staff?
Good evening and welcome, Monica Merritt. I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant, Elizabeth Adams. Thank you for being here, keeping us on track every single meeting. Also for Charlie Jones, the man behind the scenes who tapes our meetings for us for people that are not able to be in attendance. I will ask the rest of my core team to introduce themselves.
Good evening, PM ESD, I'm the interim Chief Finances and Operations Officer.
Welcome, everyone, Liz Vartanian-Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent, Human Resources.
Good evening, Curtis Woods, Student Services.
Hi, everyone, Mike Bender, Chief Academic Officer.
Good evening, everyone, Nick Brandon, Director of Communications, and welcome to the Pioneer students here tonight.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Heather Colombo, the President of the Teachers Association.
Okay, with the student leaders from Pioneer, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda is the adoption of our agenda, approval of our consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion on action item 1802116. Do I have a motion?
Madam President, I'd like to make motion to adopt the agenda slash approve the consent agenda, action item 18-2-116.
Support.
Okay, it was moved by Member Brooks and supported by Member Mullen. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Merritt, would you like to take us through the consent agenda?
Thank you. Believe it or not, mid-year, the Human Resources Department is still busy hiring champions. So this evening, we have for your consideration, new hires. We have administrative replacements for the Associate Director of Integrated Technology Systems, the Assistant Principal of Discovery Middle School, and the Administrative Assistant to Scheduling and Data Services. In addition, we have leaves, tenure recommendations, and we have the approval of minutes from our regular meeting on January the 23rd, as well as our special meeting on January the 29th.
Okay. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
Okay, good evening, everyone. First, I would like to introduce some new teachers to our school district. We have Kimberly Power, who is going to be a counselor at Farron Elementary School. She comes to us with a bachelor's degree and a master's degree from Eastern Michigan University. Next, we have Chelsea Schroder. Chelsea will be teaching social studies at East Middle School. She comes to us with a bachelor's degree from Central Michigan University. Congratulations, Chelsea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
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 Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, I would like to introduce three new administrators to our school districts.
Andrew Steiman, come on up. Alex, Alexander Naroyan, and Jennifer Doig. So Andrew. Andrew is our new Associate Director of Integrated Technology. He has a bachelor's degree and a master's degree from Michigan State University. He taught high school biology before he became the Educational Technology Consultant for Kent ISD, where he has worked for six years. He is also an adjunct professor at Michigan State University. Welcome, Andrew.
Thank you very much for having me. Very excited to be here.
A few words you'd like to share with us?
First, I would just like to say thank you all for what you do for this district. I'm very excited to be joining the district in this capacity. I've been, as Liz mentioned, working educational technology for the past several years, and this is an opportunity for me to grow on that and support the students and staff and families with technology in the district. So, very excited to be here, thank you so much.
Great. Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
It's official, welcome.
Thank you so much.
Welcome. Congratulations, Andrew, thank you.
Thank you.
Wow.
We saw how long it took.
Wow.
Okay, next, we have Alexander Naroyan. He is our new Assistant Principal at Discovery Middle School. He comes to us with a bachelor's degree and a master's degree from Grand Valley State University, and he is currently working on completing his specialist degree in educational leadership. He also previously was a middle school and high school social studies teacher. Currently, he is a middle school teacher in Royal Oak for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students. Congratulations, Alexander, and welcome to our school district.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone sitting in this room and for everyone that's, you know, helped me throughout this journey and throughout this process, and I can't explain how excited I am to go back to Discovery and work with the community there, teachers, staff, and students, and just kind of see where this journey takes us. So, go Eagles.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You remember.
Yeah, you heard it. That's your job.
Welcome.
Yep, thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Dack.
Jennifer is our new Administrative Assistant for Scheduling and Data Services, and her office is at Salem High School on the second floor. I came to visit you last week.
Oh, did you? I was in Arlington.
Anyway, she has a bachelor's degree from University of Michigan. She also has office experience at the elementary and high school levels, and we already know she has a very positive attitude and is looking forward to this, having this experience here in our district.
Thank you guys all so much for having me. I'm really excited to be here. I haven't met a single person yet who hasn't been warm and welcoming, and it's a great environment. And give me a call if your MyStar breaks.
Seriously. You put that out there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you with Arlene Wenzel?
Yes.
Give her my best. Tell her I said hi.
She's welcome.
She's blessed. Please tell her to live.
Thank you.
You're right.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Next, we have a tenure recommendation for Lindsay Pignotello, photography teacher at Salem High School. She is unable to be with us this evening, but let me tell you a little bit about Lindsay and what Principal Kim Velarosa has said about her. Lindsay was transferred to Salem High School from one of our elementary schools four years ago. During that time, she has become an integral part of our art department. She is positive in her interactions with all colleagues. She is a teacher that connects well with children and is very well-liked by her students. In addition to her contributions in the classroom, Lindsay contributes to our school community in many ways. Lindsay works with the district art show, she serves as class council advisor at Salem High School, and she advises the PCUP Photography Club and serves on our school diversity committee. Lindsay completed her coursework to be certified as a school administrator recently after completing an internship with Salem Administration. So congratulations, Lindsay, on receiving tenure in our school district in five successful years of teaching.
Congratulations, everyone. And now, we're at celebrating success, everybody's favorite part of the meeting. And tonight, the presenter will be Member Sudhu, and she is celebrating Pioneer Middle School Line the Library Food Drive.
Well, this is one of the best things that we do together, because it showcases some of the great work that's happening in Plymouth Canton. So this evening, we would like to honor Pioneer Middle School for collecting over 5,100 food items for their Line the Library Food Drive. On behalf of the school, we will recognize the National Junior Honor Society Leadership Team with Students with Tenacity Achieving and Receiving a Reaching Success, which is the Stars Awards. These eighth grader students had planned, publicized, and led the food collection through Pioneer classrooms. All 98th grade and 127th grade NJHS students participate, participated in sorting, packing, bagging, decorating, and encouraging their schoolmates to donate. I would like to invite the Pioneer Middle School Principal Kevin Rain and Pioneer Librarian Technology Integrational Specialist and NJHS Advisor Gwen Marchesano up to the podium, along with the NJHS Leadership Team. Please come on up, everyone.
Kevin, Gwen, would you like to say a few words?
Sure, thank you. First of all, it's awesome to see a lot of familiar Pioneer faces around this table as well, but I will tell you that my seventh year here, in our, my second year, we started the NJHS, I had Carrie Fromm, who's now a leadership position in the district, and Gwen approach us with this idea, and since that time, it's really been something about taking the talent from our kids and finding a way for them to channel it. And really, when we look at it, we're a community school district. Our job is to help our community, everyone. And these kids love giving back, the families love giving back, and the proudest part for me the whole time with this is when the Salvation Army showed up to pick up the food, they said, "Oh, wow, that's a lot of food." So, we actually, they were actually concerned driving away from Pioneer because the van didn't look like it was going to be able to hold getting down Ann Arbor Road, which was awesome. But, we kept our fingers crossed and they delivered. But it really is Gwen and this team this year that is an outstanding group, along with our other NJHS advisors. So I'm going to get out of the way so she can talk and make sure we honor all those involved.
Hello, everybody. Good to see you all again. It is a team effort, National Junior Honor Society at Pioneer. I am one of five teachers that lead our group. Brandy Chun, Jennifer Fenner, Dana Hunter, and Julie Milo are the other advisors with me. And I am so proud of our students. They really exemplify the five pillars of NJHS: scholarship, service, leadership, character, and citizenship. And I will introduce three of our 17 student leaders. Unfortunately, we couldn't get more able to come tonight, but our leaders who are with us tonight are Anna Abram, Ella Pirzeki, and Samantha Russo.
Good evening. We are part of the Pioneer Middle School's NJHS Student Leadership Team. I'm Samantha.
I'm Ella.
And I'm Anna. We are here to talk to you about the canned food drive that took place at Pioneer. As you're watching the slideshow behind all of you, you can see that there are quotes from other NJHS leaders such as ourselves that participated in the event. Over the course of two weeks, our school collected over 5,100 non-perishable food items, and that is about equal to six cans per student.
This was a moment where our school came together at heart and competed for a prize. Each homeroom was challenged to bring in as many cans as possible. The homeroom that brought in the most cans won a celebratory donut party. Ms. Kramer's homeroom won in a very close contest, bringing in 754 items.
As leaders, we had a vital role in the process. We not only pumped up the school and encouraged students to bring as, as many cans as possible, but each morning, we went around to our assigned homerooms to collect and count cans, which we organized in the LRC. After we collected them, the eighth graders put the food in bags and loaded them onto the Salvation Army's trucks. At the same time, the seventh graders decorated the bags and made sure that when people got them, they smiled. Sure, it was all fun and games by having the chance to win a donut party, but for the families we collected, it could mean a lifetime for them. Seeing everyone come together was very inspiring.
It proved to us that we middle schoolers could make an impact on the world. In the end, we were able to collect food for 250 different families that live and work around us. We helped provide delicious and wholesome meals to hungry families that truly needed the food. We are so happy to be a part, we are so happy to be a part of Pioneer Middle School and proud of how our school came together to help our community.
Thank you for taking the time to listen to us tonight, and we hope we not only impacted the families, but we impacted you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, and yes, you've made a huge impact on the community, on all of us, and I encourage you to keep that up wherever you go. So on behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to present the NJHS Leadership Team with the Stars Awards, Students with Tenacity Achieving and Reaching Success. Gwen, can you assist me with passing out?
Do you want me to? Please? Pushing? Nicholas? Is someone at the hall?
Congratulations, everyone, and I would like you to all come and shake the board members' hands.
Thanks for all you've done.
Good job.
Thank you. Awesome job.
Good 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 job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, as always.
Continue.
Good job.
Congratulations, as always.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, good to see you dress up so nice.
7:19, it should be over.
We should be, that should be it.
I'm sure we're done.
Well, that was really inspiring.
Yeah, great work.
Lot of items collected. I, I wrote down 1,500 at first, and then I had heard it wrong and realized it was 5,100. Wow. So now, we're at letter C on our agenda, Board Committee Reports and Action. First up is the President's Report. I don't have a lot to report, but I did want to mention that Member Brooks and I are participating in Leadership Canton, and I'm really, really glad that we have this opportunity, and I'm really looking forward to making more connections in our broader community. Next is Student Performance and Achievement with Member Sudhu.
I'm kind of disappointed that most of the people left, because we had a great meeting. There was a lot discussed, and I was hoping that more people would be here to listen to it, but it's being recorded, so they'll, they'll hear it out. So we were actually led through some great work with Dr. Michael Bender and his team, and we got a walkthrough with the new MDE Education Parent Dashboard, which is really cool. I know there was a lot of work and effort that went into that, so the team's going to work together on how to communicate that information to the parents, along with a little tip sheet in how they can access the parent dashboard. We also got an overview about how teachers are working with students to prepare them for the M-Step, which is coming up. And most importantly, I think there was a lot of great conversation about developing creativity and technical skills, those non-traditional skills that kids need for the workforce. So what are we doing at Plymouth Canton to make sure that our kids, once they graduate, will have the skills they need to be successful in whatever job is out there? Many of those jobs, we can't even imagine at this moment. So it was really nice to hear that the district's already on board with a lot of amazing engineering classes, STEM classes, but we're also going to explore some other programs that are like certification programs for like Cisco or networking, where kids can have those programs, those certificates, and be able to walk out of Plymouth Canton and have a decent job while they pursue some other coursework or degree program. So, a lot of work is happening there. And we also got an overview of a new program that the team looked at in Ohio, and I believe that the board is going to get a preview of that program at some point, SME Foundation Partnership. So, Dr. Bender can explain more of that. And, Dr. Bender, do you want to share the upcoming PD opportunities for the Safe and Supportive Learning Environments for all students?
Sure do. So, we're fortunate this evening to engage in some learning during the work session with the members of the Board of Education and our Safe and Supportive Learning Environments for LGBTQ students. And they'll have a very similar presentation for our, all of our building administrators, our principals, as well as our district administrators at our Leaders Meeting tomorrow. So, we're looking forward to continue our learning.
So that's great. So we're making these connections that we're all aware of these programs, and the administrators are also getting that same information. So we're excited to learn more about that. And that was pretty much it. And the next meeting is scheduled for March 7th, and President Borninski has agreed to step in for me since I'll be out of town that day, so thank you for that.
No problem. Next up is the Policy Committee, Ms. Crouch.
Great, thank you, President Borninski. So we have not had a policy meeting since our last board meeting. Our next meeting will be February 27th, here at the Board Office at 5, 5, 5:30. 5:30, we keep playing around with it, at 5:30. But one of the things that we will be talking about at the next board meeting is we will have someone from Teaching and Learning visiting us. It'd be a great meeting, if you want to stop by as well. For those of you who, you know, consistently come to the meetings, one of the things that you will know is that, one of the things that the Policy Committee embarked on this year was to kind of take a year-long look at how the various departments in this school district are living up to our equity policy, kind of how they're, you know, implementing that. And so we're going to have Teaching and Learning come and talk to us about some of the things that they're doing. We have been taking, you know, a really extensive review of it, because one of the things that we'll do at the end is kind of, or midway through, is kind of look at where we see gaps, right? And maybe, we may, you know, suggest that there might be additional policies that we need to implement or adopt that, that come out, come out of that, that review. So just some pretty good work that we're doing, you know, we're, we're looking forward to it, and so we'll have Teaching and Learning present to us at the next meeting. Looking forward to it.
Okay, next up is Finance and Operations.
All of these super exciting committee meetings, they're just fantastic. Finance and Operations met last, last Thursday on the 8th, and we got to go through the budget amendment, which you'll hear about this evening, as well as some, some potential bid packages and other purchases that we're doing. I'm, I'm super excited about the work that the administration and the district is doing and being good stewards of, of the community's funds and operation processes, and really being able to take some of the investment that we've had through the RISA program and other things to be able to put good programs back into the classroom. It is, in my opinion, the most exciting committee, but I've attended now the, the Policy Committee, and I, I'm, I feel jealous that I don't get to attend all of these committees.
You're more than welcome.
But I, I think I may end up coming, but it's really, really hard to keep your mouth shut in those committees. So, anyway, I encourage everybody to come to the board meetings, come to the policy meetings where they get a chance to see the detailed level work that we do, and learn all about the great things that are happening in the district.
Thank you. All right, next up is Citizens Comments. Do we have any tonight?
We do not.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Okay. Now we're at letter E, Administrative Reports, Recommendations, and first up is the Superintendent's Report.
All right, so thank you. I just wanted to share, I had the pleasure last evening of spending some time with members of our community in the Coffee with Monica. This was our quarterly event. We tried to mix it up. We held an evening event last night. We want to thank Salem Rock Cafe for hosting us, as well as Christina from Sweet Waters.
Christina Wilson.
Wilson from Sweet Waters Tea, who provided the coffee and treats for us. But just a wonderful opportunity to engage with our family, families. We talk about voice and how important it is when we're all working together to just provide the best educational environment for students. So giving parents an opportunity for us, continuous improvement, giving us feedback on how things are going, as well as suggestions on how we can improve, that's always a, a good outcome of those meetings. But it also gives us an opportunity to provide updates about current happenings in the district. So we just appreciated everyone that was there. We will host our spring one and announce the date soon for that, and just keep those meetings happening. Also, would like to announce our Third Annual Realtors Breakfast. That will be on February the 28th. We're going to host it this year at PARC Park. That will be at 8:30 a.m. All local Realtors are invited to attend. This is an incredible opportunity for us to brag about Y-PCCS to our ambassadors, our Realtors who really go about, and I'm going to tell you, our teachers and our students make it easy to market our district, because if you see, if you experience even a moment in our classrooms and our extracurricular activities, who wouldn't want their child to be raised in this environment? So we're able to share that good news with Realtors, they're able to share that news with prospective families as they move into the district. Happy to say, families are moving into our district, we are growing. That is a result of the hard work that takes place every day with our staff members, so we appreciate that and the hard work of our kids. So Realtors Breakfast, share the good news so they can get that information out. And finally, it's all about the kids, right? So let's celebrate our World Champions Robotics Team as they're getting ready to unveil the new robot. The name of the new robot this year is Glitch, and that will take place at Canton Little Theater on February 21st at 7:00 p.m. Always give a shout-out to J. Obsnick and that incredible reigning World Champion students from the Robotics Club. It's just an incredible program and an opportunity for kids. So, show up and meet Glitch. That's it, thank you.
I was going to try and make some kind of pun about Glitch, but it won't come off well. So, now we're at Finance and Operations. Ms. ESD, I see we have several first readings tonight.
Yes, we've been very busy.
Yes.
We had a lot of fun.
Sounds like we're trying to monopolize.
Yes, so the first one is Consider Approval of Salem High School Pool Upgrades. And I was lucky that I got to go to the Finance and Operations Committee meeting, and so I heard a little bit about this, but I thought maybe you and/or Patrick might want to at least explain that, that one diagram, because that was a little confusing.
Sure, so we're doing some, we're doing some, I'll, I'll do it, and then you can correct me when I get it wrong, or our folks from TMP. So we're doing some, some upgrades into the Salem pool as part of a review of, of all of the facilities. We're making sure that we've got things that are, are safe and secure for our students. And one of the things that we identified was the scoring platform. This is where the scorers actually sit to observe the, the swimmers when they're in the process. The scoring platform used to be in the opposite end of the pool, and we saw an opportunity to both put it over the, the line for the pool where the swimmers are actually going, so they've got a better viewing of that, as well as to improve the safety and accessibility of that platform. So it's a new platform that will be installed there, as well as some relocation of some wiring and some other components in that process. That platform will be accessible from a ramp, through the existing ramp that's there, so for, for, if any of our scorers need, are, need an accessible entrance, they'll have access to that at this time. We'll also have a, an elevation of that above the stand, so it won't interfere with the, the, the audience that may be present there, and the audience can't interfere with, with them, because they're above that process there. So we think it's going to be a, a good upgrade, as well as, as well as improve the, the, the overall capabilities that we have in the pool through the relocation of some wiring and some other things that we're doing as part of that process.
Any questions? Next is Consider Approval of Bid Package Number Eight, and it's awards and site upgrade.
and the audience can't interfere with them because they're above that process there. So we think it's going to be a good upgrade, as well as improve the overall capabilities that we have in the pool through the relocation of some wiring and some other things that we're doing as part of that process.
Any questions? Okay. Next is Consider Approval of Bid Package Number Eight, and it's Boards and Site Upgrades. Does anybody want to explain this one?
I'll do it again.
Hey, you're out of roll, go ahead.
So Bid Package Number Eight is a collection of bids that we've talked about here at the board meeting before. This is largely a set of repaving improvements that are done at Canton High School, or I'm sorry, at the park actually, overall, where we're taking slabs or individual squares that have got excessive damage and replacing those. It's not a full replacement of all of the squares. It's only about 20% of the squares in the school. But those squares that we are replacing will be built at a stronger level. So it'll be a deeper set of concrete, it'll be more compacted base, and that'll help improve the quality of that process and should provide us better longevity with that. As part of this process, we're also doing a relocation of a water main at Canton High School and some site lighting upgrades at Salem and Canton High Schools.
Any questions?
No, but I just want Pat to know, I'm so impressed. I'm so impressed.
This stuff is amazing.
I know, I'm just so impressed.
He knows his stuff.
I love it.
Okay. All right, the next item is the Consider Approval of the Purchase of 14 Buses from the 2013 bond, and it's also a first reading.
So this is a bus purchase that comes from, well, you asked me to speak, so. This is a bus purchase that comes from the bond issue that the community supported us with over the last few years. We're purchasing three groups of buses. We're producing, purchasing, let's see, hold on, I don't remember the exact numbers.
Five, four, five.
Right, there we go. We have eight 87-passenger buses. These will be diesel buses because the propane buses that we've used in the past are not available in this larger size, and so we have to go to the diesel buses. We've done some recent work with our diesel buses that we have been able to achieve the right kind of fuel economy and support for those buses, and we talked about that at our last meeting. We also have four 77-passenger buses. These will be gasoline buses. Although we have been largely purchasing propane buses in the past, we, for these larger buses, we find that the acceleration and the power that's available in the gasoline buses are better than what we have with the propane buses. We're still committed to propane, and you'll see that with the last five buses that we're buying, which are special education buses. Although these buses say that they're 47 passengers, that's the maximum capacity of those buses. When we configure them for special education purposes, they're a much smaller number of passengers. So it's, I think, around 12 special education students with the appropriate lockdowns and other accessibility components there. In addition to this, we're also adding four camera systems to all of these buses and two-way radios. Most of our buses right now have three camera systems, but the most recent purchases that we've done have had four cameras, which allow us to see facing forward as well as, so a dash cam view, as well as two cameras for the ridership in the front and the back of the bus, as well as one looking at the driver specifically.
We need to put you on staff.
I know. That's what I said. I was going to write a note to you like, oh.
Really pays attention. Very.
I'm telling you, it is the most exciting meetings possible.
But you are the reason why we have restrictions on who can talk in the policy meeting.
Well, I just wanted to clarify that it's five 87-passenger.
Yes, I may have misspoke.
At the beginning, yeah.
Thank you.
And then also the lockdowns that you mentioned, those are for wheelchairs, right?
That's correct. That's for wheelchairs.
I didn't want anybody to think we're locking down kids.
No, thank you so much. I'm sorry. It's for the wheelchairs that may be on those special education buses.
Are there any questions?
For Pat, very exciting.
Look, for Pat, any questions for Pat?
Any questions for Pat? Okay. Next up is Consider Approval of Farron Elementary Classroom Chair Purchase, and this is also a first reading. And I believe this is coming from their grant that they received out of our enhancement millage money.
That's exactly right. So all of our schools get RISA money, and we've allocated that money for them. And Farron has chosen to replace all of their school chairs. So this is, I believe, more than 500 chairs that are part of this purchase, and they will be uniform and nice new chairs for Farron.
Any questions?
Should put pictures of that too.
Okay. Next up is Action Item 1802-121. It's Consider Approval of the 2017-2018 Budget Amendment. It is a final reading. I need a motion on this, please.
Madam President, I have moved that we consider approval of the 2017-2018 Budget Amendment, Action Items 1802-121. This will be a first and final reading.
Support. Okay, it was moved by a member Kehoe and supported by a member McQuine.
And there is no way I'm going through this.
I was going to say. Sam, let it go home. All the staff really appreciate you taking that one.
Well, this is something that we do every year, though.
That's correct. I'm sorry, there's no way I'm going to take the thunder and the fantastic story away that Pam does because she does such a fantastic job, both in putting together this budget amendment, as well as helping to explain it so we all understand it.
And I want to extend a great thanks to Vicki Amore, who's our jewel, who really is on top of all of this. Okay, so this is something we do do. It's required. We do it mid-year and we do it at year-end, so you will see another one in June. And so this is our mid-year, and it encompasses all of the budget transfers that are made from July to date, and also any information we receive, updated revenues or expenses and all. I'm going to go over the first two pages, which is just the general budget amendment that looks like our financial statements that you receive, our financial updates, and just sort of explain to you the columns. But then I'm going to go through detail of what the changes were that totaled the amendment. It's a little different this year because of some of the things we've done. So the first column is your prior year actual, and what that is, is our audited statements from the prior year. So you had seen those statements last winter. And then we have our original budget. This is the budget. This column is what we adopted on June 27th last year. It's our original budget. Under the amendments, those columns, the reason we broke them out is because there's a lot of ins and outs that just are consistent. The first one is the assigned fund balance with the carryover enhancement millage. So if you look at the two pages, the first page is revenue and the second are expenses. And what that is, what that's made up of is the $40,000 per school that we gave and allowed them to have to spend through June 30th, 2018, and assigned at the end of the year, and the $10,000 school improvement monies that they were given. The other thing is, is the 1.5 security budget that we created, and we have until June 30th. So that column comes to $2,676.49. The next column is the assigned fund balance carryover from POs. If you remember last year, we brought a bunch of expenditures in June, and we assigned fund balance to purchase them or assign them from last year. What this represents is, are the items that weren't received. You'll see later on in an adjustment that we did receive some of the textbooks we purchased, so that was an adjustment. Because when you assign, you still have to budget in the next year. So this is adjusting this year's budget for the assignments we made. The next column is MIPSers 147(c).
Excuse me just a moment. Do we need to move forward one page?
Nope, we're still.
Pam, it might be helpful. We used everyone. Is that a, oh, is that one of those splasher things?
You were missing the headings.
Oh, yeah. No, I have it. That's fine. Okay. I don't know if we, okay, so go to the top of the page first so they can see the column names, I guess.
Yeah, if you see the column, yeah.
Okay. So here, the MIPSers 147(c). This is an in and out. You're going to see it come in in revenue, the $3,262.410, and then on the expenditure page, it goes out. So basically, they give it to you to take it for the retirement. So there's no financial statement impact, and that's why we did it in a statement. On the revenue side, you just see one number because that's the revenue. But if you go to the next page, you'll see that that's an expense line on every function.
Yep.
All right. The last column is what we're going to focus on, this Other Amendments. Okay? What that is, is actually the amendments. This is where we receive new information about revenues or changes in our expenditures, and we actually made adjustments. So that's the column that we're going to focus on tonight, and then our Total Amendments. So if you look, if we go to the bottom of the second page. Okay. So here's where it's really important. So the first column is, like I said, is the prior year actuals. So that was the net change in our fund balance. This is our balanced budget. So we had planned use of $199,745 when we adopted our budget. The $2,006, again, is the assignment we made from the enhancement millage, and the $403,545 are the POs assigned. So that totals $3,273,939 of planned use of fund balance. And what I want to point out is, we have a net change now of $1,756,674 of adjustments. So the planned use now is going to be the $1,005,172.65. So we've gone from $3,000,000 planned use to $1,005,000, and we'll see why because we had an improvement in our revenue of approximately 1.6. And the overall changes in expenses is really $127,736 to the positive. But because of this format, it's very difficult, line item by line item, to explain what the difference ours is because instructions will have salaries and benefits. So I'm going to walk you through so you can see all of the changes that were made by actual adjustment. Okay. So if we go to the next page, we'll just walk through the adjustments. And what this layout is, is this is the description of the adjustment, and we have it side by side, revenue and expenditures with the net impact. So you can see the ins and outs, like if it's a grant, or like we have some changes between funds and all. You'll see the in and out and see the net impact. And so the big deal, the big issue is the net impact on the budget. So we'll just walk through these. So the first one, Assigned Fund Balance Enhancement Millage. Again, that's the whole column, that $2,006 that we talked about. And those are just the $40,000 and $10,000 per school and the $1,005 for security. The assign, number two, the Assigned Fund Balance Open Purchase Orders, which was a column, the $403,545. And later on, we'll see an adjustment for the textbooks that were received because initially there was over $700,000 assigned. The adjustment is Section 147(c), which again is the MIPSers, and you see it going in and out. It's on the revenue side, it's on the expenditure side, with no net impact on financial statements. And then we have the Other Adjustments, and that's the column that really is the ins and outs and the changes that have occurred. And Property Taxes, if you look back, if you look back for state aid, you'll see that it just netted $7,000, but these are the ins and outs. So we've had an increase in property tax revenue, net of delinquents. And these are property tax values resulting in increased revenue. The revenue is limited to 98% of the increase due to estimated delinquent taxes. This is revenue increase offset by a decrease in foundation allowance, which is on line 12. So when we get an increase in state aid because of property, I mean, the increase in property taxes, it really then decreases our state aid overall payment. So it's sort of an in and out. It's not the exact, because of special ed calculations and all. But I wanted you to see that we do have an increase in property taxes. Increase in gate receipts to actual results for fall sports, $19,738. We have number six, increase in E-rate revenue based on actual. So that's just a true up to actual. Number seven, increase in crossing guard revenue based on actual. It's a true up, $2,0541. Number eight, transfer adult education tuition revenue to grant fund. This is per federal adult ed grant. It's required to record related program income within the grant fund. So it was taken out of the general fund and into the grant fund. Number nine, alternative education grant, jobs for Michigan graduates, $14,700. This is a new grant award from Southeast Michigan Community Alliance to cover a portion of a teacher's contract for the Jobs for Michigan Graduate Program. Ten, state aid foundation allowance. This is where you see the change from $120 to $100. We budgeted it at $100 last year, so now it's official to $120. So this is a budgeted increase of 100 per pupil. Actual increase was 120. State aid enrollment adjustments, $491,553. State aid revenue has been adjusted to reflect updated enrollment figures that Monica's been talking about. So this is from budget to actual. Reduction in state aid due to increase in property tax. There is the offset to number four. Increase in property tax revenue causes the state aid share of the foundation allowance to decrease. Thirteen, state aid adjustment for 16, 17 special ed costs, a net $76,570. This is based on formula. The district's special education categorical funding is updated after the previous year's special ed cost report. So you file our 4096 in September, and then they update and take the adjustment. So we're always sort of like a year lag. Fourteen, update MIPSers offset Section 147(c) to January state aid report, $29,481. This is just adjusting the estimate to actual. Fifteen, state aid revenue share with ASD Center Program, $95,886. This is revised estimate based on updated information. A portion of the state aid revenue is required to be transferred to the Act 18 Center Program to cover the costs for students in the program. Sixteen, state aid revenue share with hearing impaired program, $59,876. This is a new adjustment required for the new hearing impaired Act 18 Center Program that opened this year. A portion of the state aid revenue is required to be transferred to the Act 18 Center Program to cover the costs for students in the program. Seventeen, added cost CTE adjustment. It's a net of $2,324, and it's just an adjust estimate to actual. Section 107 Grant Adjustment, again, revenue of $15,790, expenses of $3,664, a net of $19,464, and it's just estimate to actual. New state categorical high school per pupil bonus, $147,088. This is the $25 that they're paying for every high school student, but it's a finite pot, so depending on what the enrollment was in the state, for high school students, we got our proportionate share. We didn't actually get $25 per pupil. It was short by $7,700. And I think Patrick figured out what that was.
It's approximately like 98%. So it's good, but it's not as good as we were told we were going to get.
But again, it was a finite pot, and they do that a lot with these categoricals. Like they have a finite pot estimated on what they think the population's going to be, then when they get the actual population, you just get your share. Twenty, state categorical reimbursement for computer adaptive tests. This is an application-based categorical revenue and is a reimbursement for the K3 portion of costs for the NWEA assessment software. This application for funds was filed subsequent to the budget adoption. Twenty-one, carryover on spent state grants with a 930 spending deadline. This is the first robotics and science Olympia grant period extended through September 30th. This represents the carryover of unspent funds that was available until 930, so you see the revenue in and the expenditure out. Number twenty-two is the forfeited portion of robotics grant not spent by 930, which is $7,700. This is a portion of grant funds not spent by deadline of 930, 17, and the district has taken steps to put monitoring in place to make sure that that didn't happen again. Twenty-three, other state aid adjustments per the January state aid report, $95,945. This is formula-based adjustments to prior year revenue and Michigan tax tribunal adjustments related to prior year periods of values that impact state aid. Twenty-four, adjust Act 18 Independence Para Pro revenue, $67,395. This is independence para pro Act 18 revenue is based on 71.386% of related expenditures. It's a formula-based adjustment which has an offsetting expenditure reduction, and you can see that on line 38. Adjust indirect cost recovery from center programs, $82,989. It's just a revised estimate based on updated information. Twenty-six, one-time distribution of Act 18 fund balance from Wayne County RISA. This is the third year in a row that we received it. It's the distribution of excess reserve funds received from Wayne RISA. While the nature of the funding is one-time funding, this is the third year we have received such a distribution. The funds are dependent on the level of reserves within RISA's Act 18 funds. And again, we always contemplate this every year, should we budget it? But we take the conservative approach because we're never sure. Twenty-seven, installment purchase agreement, purchase of copy machines. The district has recently refreshed its fleet of multipurpose printers, copy machines, which we all discussed and approved, which was funded through an installment purchase agreement. The original budget we put in there when we were considering purchasing copy users was $161,450. We did an installment purchase, so what you have to do is you have to record the revenue or record the expenses. So the revenue is recorded at 338457, and the net adjustment to expenditures was $177,007. Twenty-eight, estimated FICA cost on PA 75, 3% refunds. In December 2017, the Michigan Supreme Court issued a judgment that retiree healthcare fund- healthcare funds previously withheld from employees under Public Act seventy-five of two thousand and ten were unconstitutional. These contributions are being returned to the district by the Office of Retirement Services. The district will pass the refunds back to the employee from who the funds were withheld. The original withholdings were done on a pre-tax basis. Therefore, the district will be required to pay the employer's share of FICA on those refunds. This is an estimate of that cost. So that's an additional expense. Twenty-nine, textbook reduction for purchases accelerated into fiscal year seventeen. And this is what we discussed about the assignment. So these are the textbooks that were received. So we get to lower our budget. Salary retirement FICA adjustments, staff and vacancies to current balance of contract, four eighty-eight four oh one. These are taking into consideration all the vacancies or lapsed time or changes in salaries. Thirty-one, healthcare adjustments to current balance of contract include census changes, staffing changes, vacancy adjustments, four eighty-four sixty-two. Workers' cap, large case contingency. This is a hundred and ninety-seven thousand. This is adjust to maximum exposure based on stop loss limits of some litigations we have out there. Thirty-three, increase in projected substitute costs based on year-to-date expenses compared to prior year, two hundred and three seven forty-three. The substitute costs are trending higher than prior year. Thirty-four, retirement savings, seven additional teachers retired compared to the budgeted fifteen the year before and went the other way. So it's always just sort of an estimate. So it's the wage differential between retired teachers and replacement teachers for additional severance retirements over budgeted amounts. Long-term sub-cost to cover leaves of absence. These are on-budget administrative leaves for a one thirty-one oh eighty-three. Additional benefits for new subscribers during Plan Five open enrollment period, one hundred and ten five five four. Thirty-seven, reduce overage para hours and supplies based on revised criteria per the PCEA contract, one hundred and eighty-five five sixty. Thirty-eight, a reduction in special ed independence para pros based on year-to-date expenses and historical trends, ninety-four four twelve. Increase thirty-nine, increased staffing requirements for five oh four plans and this is compliance. And that's twenty thousand two sixty-eight. Community ed transfer adjustment, forty-one thousand three nineteen. HR consulting costs to date, ten thousand four four five. And those were consulting fees related to negotiations and staff training. Forty-two, special education staffing shifts between grants. And this is one that really like it was almost a half a million both ways, but the net impact is thirty-three thousand four eighty-two. Forty-three, restructure CTE STEM coordinator and support positions for twenty thousand nine forty-two. We achieved savings for retired administrator, which was offset by teacher release time for STEM and CTE teacher leaders and a point five CTE secretarial position for the remainder of the year. Add student support center at Starkweather, thirteen thousand four ninety-six. Forty-five, restructure print shop operations, pilot program, thirty-five eight fifty-six. We've outsourced print shop resulting in reduction of wages and benefits and increase in purchase services. Forty-six, utilities adjustment water, seventy-eight oh sixty-nine. It's revised projection based on prior year results and current year trending. Increase in paid school administration fee, three point five percent to four point two five percent, seventeen thousand dollars. And it's just a contract. Forty-eight, textbook adjust estimate to actual, fifty-five nine forty-three. The actual costs were less than budgeted amount. It was for elementary school kids and Atlas Rubicon. Arts Academy budget needs, seven thousand six fifty-seven. Classroom furniture due to increased enrollment, forty-eight thousand nine sixty. Fifty-one, updated projection for nurses nursing services required on the bus, twenty thousand three eighty-eight. It's revised estimate based on updated information. Benchmark assessments, sixty thousand three forty-five. It's an allocation to support elementary ELA programs. Legal contingency, fifty thousand dollars. Building improvement contingency, fifty thousand dollars. Crossing guards, new post assigned, eight thousand six twenty-six. Fifty-six, unforeseen need for new delivery vehicle approved by the Board of Education on nine twelve, thirty-eight six forty-two. Fifty-seven, supplies and materials for upgrades to lighting at the bus lot garage, ten thousand. And then fifty-eight is miscellaneous other adjustments for eight thousand seven twenty and it's just a bunch of little adjustments that aren't detailed. So the overall net adjustments are one three, one million three seventeen five twenty. So the amended budget is going to be a hundred and sixty-eight seven eighteen four eighty-eight revenue, a hundred and seventy-two thirty-five seven fifty-three expenditures. Any questions?
Did you have a question? I saw you writing, I didn't know, good question.
Oh, no.
I was just going to make, I was just going to make a comment. First, I wanted to thank you, Pam, as well as Vicki and the entire finance staff. The way that this was explained and how you've pulled all this information together has been very helpful. I know that it's hard for everybody to go through all these lines. It's a little bit easier in finance and operations because we can have a little bit more of a discussion on these and, you know, really enjoy the party. But, you know, it, this has been a really great presentation and helped us to understand all the ins and outs. And, you know, you may not have noticed these things, but there was significant operational savings that occurred in this process as well as increased revenues. And I think that it's a testament to the work that we're doing as an administration and a district, that we're paying attention to costs in every area in every place and looking for those opportunities for savings continuously. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Since nobody wants to discuss further, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Okay, next up is teaching and learning and we have several action items from the teaching and learning department. Dr. Bender, did you want to make any comments?
Yes, thank you. And good evening, Mrs. Berninski and members of the board. This evening, we're asking for the board's consideration of a resolution to adopt name changes to high school courses and this will be the final reading.
And this has already gone through the SPA committee, I just wanted to mention. So we're looking at action item eighteen oh two one seventeen and it's consider approval of resolution for course name changes at Plymouth Canton Educational Park. It's a final reading. Do I have a motion?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to consider approval of resolution of course name changes at Plymouth Canton Educational Park. Action item number eighteen dash oh two dash one one seven, this is final reading.
Support.
Okay. The motion was made by a member Sudo and supported by a member Brooks. Is there any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Okay, next up is action item eighteen oh two one eighteen and this is consider approval of resolution to approve the purchase of science materials to pilot for grades six through eight. I'm looking for a motion on this one also.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to consider approval of resolution to approve the purchase of science materials to pilot for grade six through eight. Action item number eighteen dash oh two dash one one eight and this is a final reading.
Support.
Okay. Motion made by member Sudo and supported by member Brooks. I just wanted to mention that this also went through the SPA committee. Is there any discussion on this? Okay. Then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Next up is action item eighteen oh two one nineteen, consider approval of resolution for non-resident school of choice, twenty eighteen nineteen. This is a final reading. I'm looking for a motion on this.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to consider approval of resolution for non-resident school of choice, two thousand eighteen nineteen. This is action item number eighteen dash oh two dash one one nine, final reading.
Support.
Okay. Motion made, was made by a member Sudo and supported by a member Brooks. And I think we do have some discussion on this.
All right. Last, at the last board meeting, we took you through a presentation for a recommendation for two hundred and fifty seats, grades K through eight in a one oh five as well as a one oh five C schools of choice program. Mr. Brandon, as well as Mr. Ruella, went through our reasons behind the recommendation as well as our success rate with the program over the last few years, speaking intentionally about our academic success, our attendance, our behaviors. Tonight, Mr. Brandon will just touch some highlights about the program before moving forward and address any questions that we may have.
Yeah, thank you. Just a review of the objectives of school of choice for the board and for the community, looking at sustaining and increasing student enrollment and then continuing to pursue achieving that balanced budget. And those are certainly the two goals that we pursued as we put together our proposal. As Ms. Merritt said, a maximum of two hundred and fifty seats, a minimum of one seat filled kindergarten through eighth grade is the proposal we're making. And it is a one oh five C, which means that it's Wayne County and then also all surrounding counties. So any other county? Yes, good clarification. We were, yeah, a one oh five and a one oh five C. So Wayne County and then all surrounding counties as well. This also would continue our non-resident employee program and our intra-district transfer program as well. One thing that we want to clarify for the board and for the community is the sibling preference rule. This is a very important thing to clarify because there's lots of different messages out there about what the sibling preference rule is and in some cases, it's mis-messaged. We want to make sure that the community and the board knows that the sibling preference rule means that siblings of current school of choice students, so that would be students who would complete the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year, are eligible to get preference, which means that they would move to the top of the list of all the applicants if they fall under the policy. And for us, that policy that we're proposing is kindergarten through eighth grade. So that would mean that the sibling has to be entering kindergarten through eighth grade in the district and no other grades would be eligible for sibling preference. Preference means that they're moved to the top of the list before the lottery would happen. So when we start the lottery, any students that are at the top of the list would be siblings of current students. Again, those siblings fall under the policy of being kindergarten through eighth grade. So it doesn't mean automatically in and that's the messaging that usually happens. It means there's preference as long as they fall under the policy.
Okay. Member Quixote?
So with respect to this process, I know that this year, we're doing K through eight, but we've done different periods in the past. Can you give some context why we're not opening it up to, to some of the same regions that we had done before? For example, nine through twelve.
Sure. So the decision for nine through twelve all comes down to capacity, particularly with the IB program, which is what we were promoting in our last couple of years for ninth and tenth grade. The IB program has become immensely popular for resident students. And so we just found last year that we were not able to fill a lot of spots. In fact, we were only able to fill with siblings and only a few of them. So that was why the decision was made this year. We do have siblings that are going into those grades, but under this policy, they would not be able to, to apply or get in.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I understood because I think I just got confused at the end. So under our sibling policy, does, I just want to be clear. Is it the sibling who has to be going into K through eight, right? Okay. So I just wanted, I wanted to be clear because it sounded like initially, we were saying that the, that the current student in our program had to be.
No, yeah. Good clarification. The current student just has to complete one year with PCCS. The sibling who would apply this year under this policy has to be in kindergarten through eighth grade. So that would mean that an incoming sibling who's going into ninth, into ninth grade would not be eligible to apply.
And I do want to clarify that that's state law, not our own policy.
You got it. Yeah.
I just wanted, I just wanted to be sure. So like if there's a current tenth grader in our program, but they have a second grade sibling, that sibling would be.
Absolutely. Because the sibling is in kindergarten through eighth grade.
I just want to make sure.
For sure. If we have a tenth grader who has a sibling who's going into ninth grade, then they would not be eligible under this policy.
Okay.
Right. And it's just to make sure that it's clear, that tenth grade sibling or that tenth grade student would, there would have either had to have come from a much prior year school of choice or perhaps last year when it was opened up to ninth and tenth grade.
Exactly. Yeah, really would have been the last two years, previous two years.
So I think, so I think it's good that you came to, that you're clarifying it. I think that we really, really need to clarify that over and over and over again because I think when we put up documents that say sibling preference allowed and, you know, maybe somebody watched last week, they don't watch this week. I think that has to be in all of our communication and try to explain. It's, it's a bit complicated, but I think that we have to, to do that because otherwise it certainly may, you know, create harm.
For sure. Yeah, we totally agree.
And I think in all of our communications, it's important that we continue, which we've been doing, is to reference state law. So as people come to interpret and are asking us, please, 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 and as much as we would, we want, we don't want to split families. We don't have that ability through state law. We can only open preference to seats that are advertised as a part of the program.
And to be clear, we're only advertising seats that, where we have capacity. So that's, that's the important part of this process is that we're not, this isn't a free for all for us for school of choice. We're only trying to fill excess capacity that we have in the, in the district.
We're in a limited.
Yeah, you got it. Limited program.
Just, just one clarification, I got a little confused as well. Those sibling preferences that move to the top, is that still a lottery at the top or is that they get the first however many seats?
They would get the first seats.
The first seats and then the lottery?
Correct. Yeah, so the, for example, the first student drawn in the lottery for a given grade level would go underneath the siblings.
Okay.
But if, for example, we only had, say, for example, we had two seats, because we say a minimum of one seat. So say we only had two seats in the second grade, but we have five siblings. We would then have to do a lottery for our siblings prior to going into a lottery.
That's right.
Okay. And so if we only had those two seats, those five siblings would be our lottery and nobody else?
That's exactly right. We take the five siblings and draw two names.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? At this time, I would like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. And next up is action item eighteen oh two one twenty, consider approval of resolution to approve the enrollment of non-resident students for PC, of PCCS employees for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. This is also a final reading and I think Nick kind of alluded to this earlier. Are there any questions? Any discussion?
We have to.
Make a motion.
Oh, yes, I need a motion. I'm sorry. Thank you.
That's right. Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to consider approval of resolution to approve the enrollment of non-resident students of PCCS employees for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year. Action item number eighteen dash oh two dash one twenty. This is a final reading.
Support.
Okay. The motion was made by a member Sudo and supported by a member Brooks. Any discussion? Any questions?
I do have one question. Nick, does, does this program come before the, the one oh five and one oh five C school of choice happens?
Like, are these placements made before? Yes.
Okay.
So long as we know about them, yes.
Right. Right. They have to, they have to apply in the same process and same time window.
Exactly. You got it. Yeah, but those placements are made before.
Okay.
Same with the intra-district transfers.
Got it. So towards that end, who comes first, school, employees, intra-district?
I don't know. It's a great question.
So we're, we're preferencing our school employees first over external school of choice employees, which is, which is, I'm sorry, external school of choice candidates. But we also preference our intra-district people before we do that. So we're opening up seats. Do, does the intra-district transfers happen before the employee school of choice?
We do the employee school of choice first and then the intra-district request next, then the window for the school of choice.
Perfect. Thank you.
Good clarification. Any other discussion or questions?
And I'm just looking at, just for clarification, because I don't know what happened between last week and this week. We just voted on the final read, but I'm looking at that, it's speaking to just the one oh five C. We made that change to be one oh five and one oh five C. And I see that the resolution that we just voted on, although we spoke of one oh five and one oh five C is only listed. So I don't know for point of Robert's rules, do we need to re-vote on a correct resolution? Because I don't want us to be.
I think we do.
Yeah. Okay.
We should read it.
Yeah. All right. We do like to read. This would be redoing a vote on Action Item eighteen oh two one nineteen. Can I have a motion that we will amend this?
So moved, or, Madam President, I move that we amend Action Item eighteen oh two one-one-nine, consider approval of resolution for non-resident School of Choice, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, to include one-oh-five in addition to one-oh-five-C.
Support.
Okay. It was moved by member Keough and member Brooks that we will amend Action Item eighteen oh two one nineteen to include one-oh-five and one-oh-five-C. All in favor of amending this, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The motion to amend was approved, seven zero. Now, I would like to vote on the amended proposal, amended resolution, which will be updated, and then when our secretary signs it, it will be correct. So, at this time, I would like a motion to approve an amended Action Item eighteen oh two one nineteen. Do I have a motion on this?
Yes. Madam President, I move that we consider approval of the amended resolution for non-resident School of Choice, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, Action Item eighteen oh two one-one-nine. Final reading.
Support.
Okay. It was moved by member Keough and, and supported by member Brooks to approve the amended Action Item eighteen oh two one nineteen to include one-oh-five and one-oh-five-C in the resolution for non-resident School of Choice, two thousand eighteen nineteen. Final reading. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The amended Action Item passes, seven zero.
Thank you.
Okay. So we are back at Action Item eighteen oh two one twenty, and I believe that member Sudo made the motion and member Brooks seconded, and we were going through the discussion on that. Are we done with the discussion?
I thought we voted on it.
Did we vote?
No, we didn't.
I don't think we voted yet.
We were about to vote.
I don't have a vote yet.
We were about to vote, but we didn't actually vote for it.
Okay.
I don't have any other discussion.
Okay. I don't have written down a vote on it. So at this time, I would like to vote on Action Item eighteen oh two one twenty, consider approval of resolution to approve the enrollment of non-resident students of PCCS employees for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. A final reading. Again, the motion was made by member Sudo and supported by member Brooks. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes, seven zero.
I was just gonna say, just for, for future reference, if we have a motion on the table, it's best that we go ahead and vote on that and then go back to it. I, I missed it. I thought we had voted on it, so I'm sorry.
I didn't write it down.
I'm just as bad, but, but, but just so that we know for the future.
Okay, yeah. That would be less messy. I agree. Okay. We may have voted on it twice, but we'll see.
Your mic is feedbacking.
I know.
Can you push away?
I, I've tried adjusting it. I know. I don't know what's going on with it. All right. At this time, I would look to look at letter F on our agenda, Action Items and Discussion. It's Action Item eighteen oh two one twenty-two, consider approval of designating a representative for Region Eight for a three-year term on the MASB Board of Directors. It's a final reading. Do I have a motion on this?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to, for, let's see, where am I? On Action Item eighteen oh two one twenty-two, consider approval of designation and representative for Region Eight for a three-year term on the MSB Board of Directors. Final reading.
Do, do you have a candidate that you're recommending?
Uh, I don't.
Okay. Um, I think maybe what we should do first, then actually before we vote on this, is discuss the candidates. So, sorry for calling for the motion. Does anybody want to propose a candidate?
I do.
Okay.
I am proposing that we choose Robert McLaughlin from Ramella's Community Schools. I spent some time on the internets today, looking them all up, and I think that he would be a good choice. Oh, he is in Wayne County. I think that's important for us to have somebody from Wayne County, because we have some, some issues that, for instance, Oakland and Macomb County don't have. He's also very interested in the equity aspect of school funding, so I thought he seemed like a great kind of guy to have.
It, it wasn't clear to me. Are we, the candidates are from these, these four different regions, but we're only voting for one candidate?
They're voting for Region Eight, I believe.
So Region Eight has four people that are running.
Thank you. Thank you.
It was sent out in board notes.
Yes, I just, I was not following. Thank you.
Yeah. So we're region, that's our, our region is Region Eight.
I understand. I got it.
Okay. Does anybody else have a candidate that they want to put forward?
Thank you for looking them up.
Okay. All right. So, let's do Action Item eighteen oh two one twenty-two, consider approval of designating a representative for Region Eight, and this is Robert McLaughlin, for a three-year term on the MSB Board of Directors. Directors, final reading. Do I have a motion on Robert McLaughlin?
Madam President, I make a motion that we approve Robert McLaughlin as the MSB representative for Region Eight for a three-year term. It is Action Item eighteen oh two one twenty-two. Final read.
Okay. Is there support for Robert McLaughlin?
Support.
All right. It was, the motion was made by a member McQuinn and supported by a member Mullin. Is there any discussion? Good. Okay. Then all in favor of designating Robert McLaughlin as our vote for Region Eight for a three-year term on the MSB Board of Directors, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Motion on Action Item eighteen oh two one twenty-two passes, seven zero. Okay. Next up on our agenda is follow-up board questions. I don't think I had any from tonight. Would that be correct? So outstanding items, the data on the success of the summer programming, says we got that in the February second board notes, so we'll cross. Did you already take that off the list, Liz?
No.
Okay. Update on the expulsion and suspension data after administration has met with schools to work with a committee to identify the causes and further alternatives to suspension. That's going to be coming up probably late spring, early summer-ish.
Coming up quicker than that.
Yeah. Okay, because we spoke about that, about wanting to make a difference on that sooner. So we were asking for information on that in March.
Right. Spring. Okay.
And that's not late spring, that's spring.
Right. We were getting something from March, and then I thought they were gonna do it more formal.
Yes. We have a formal presentation of the data, but we want to make a difference.
Yep.
This year.
Okay. And then the behavioral data on the School of Choice presentation has maybe not been updated yet.
So it's been updated. It's showing up on the front page of?
If you, if you click through the hyperlink from the board agenda notes to the School of Choice data, it's updated there.